I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCullough, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Seminero, Mrs. Hamel, Mr. Kurz, Mr. McCullough here, Mr. McGlott, Mr. Potts here, Mr. Shihoo, Mr. Wolf, and Mr. Basil.
Here. Okay, under announcements, any board member have any edits to the agenda? Anything you want to add, change? Okay, seeing none, for the benefit of the public, we'll be having an executive session to discuss personnel after this meeting. Also, the rules for participation are in the inside jack cover of the agenda. Having said that, are there any public comments on items on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. Just want to start with the opening of schools. We are already into our third week of the school year, and we've had, thankfully, a rather smooth start to the school year. The feedback on our administrative reorganization has been extremely positive, so we're very happy with that and the way everyone has started in their new positions. All of our athletic teams and activities are well into their fall season, and obviously classes are in full swing. Still have to remember that it's the third week, that's almost hard to believe already. The elementary and middle school parent orientation meetings have already taken place, and the high school parent orientation meeting takes place this Thursday night. Also like to provide just a brief update on the collection of our activity fees. All of our high school fees have been collected for athletics and the band, that's at the high school. The deadline for club payments is still out there, that's October 1st. We are still collecting for middle school sports, and the deadline for them is tomorrow. And we also still need to collect for middle school band and chorus next month, so at our October meeting, I'll be able to give the board a better idea of where we stand on the final amount of revenue collected for that.
Dr. Otto, what assurance do we have that 100% of the activities for clubs are being collected? The reason I'm asking this is I know that at least three individuals never paid last year, and they just, it just, the advisors just didn't collect money.
Yeah, we've tightened up on that. We have, Mrs. Goss has already met with all of the club advisors, and we have a new system in place to make sure that nobody falls through the cracks, she has rosters and check-offs to make sure that everybody's paying. She's not here tonight, she's at a soccer game.
Are we still accepting cash? Are we accepting checks? Is, how are we tracking the money?
I'd have to turn to Danielle for that.
I know you're accepting checks, because I sound like a man.
I would assume that whatever form, other, outside of credit cards, cash and our-
If you're gonna accept cash, you better give a receipt.
Well, that's my point was, it's easy to track a check, or an online payment, or however, or credit card, but when someone starts handling cash, and there's no receipts being issued by, I guess, the coaches or whoever else is doing this, then that's how I can imagine some people falling through the cracks, they get checked off when they're not supposed to be checked off, and nobody knows whose cash that was supposed to go for, and-
Honestly, I don't think that was the problem last year. I think what happened was, is with it being a new process, I don't think the club advisors had a full understanding of what their responsibility was, particularly with the language clubs. We've made that very clear this year, that it is part of their responsibility to make sure they collect that fee.
And, and the only, and again, the only reason I know it is, one of my checks was never cashed, and I got it found in my locker, which I didn't get it out, and I had given it to Goss, but he was to pay, but, and then I found out there were many others, many, there was a handful of others that I know of, that just didn't, and it was, you know, language clubs and some of the other club activities. The sports were pretty hard, because you know who's playing the sport, you know who's wrestling, who's on the football team, and you can run down that list, and some of the clubs, their attendance and membership records aren't as stringent as the sports clubs are.
But by the end of next month, we'll have a much better handle on that, and be able to give you, again, Mrs. Goss, or Ms. Goss will be able to hear, give a report, but she has a soccer game tonight, so we can, I'll get answers to those questions and have them ready for the next time we meet. That's it for the opening of schools. Welcome back, everybody, the year is in full swing. Item B, we have been asked to host the PA Music Educators District 10 Orchestra this year. It's a good event, from January 10th through the 12th, 2013, at our high school. We actually hosted it last year for elementary, it was actually right here in this auditorium. Mr. Henkel and Mr. McAdams are asking for the board's endorsement for this activity. Our high school has to meet certain space requirements to hold the event, and it does, and to begin the planning process, the organization needs my approval and also the board's endorsement in the form of a signature to host this activity. I support this activity myself, as it provides a great opportunity to showcase our school and community, also brings many, many people to the community and multiple school districts for those three days. I'd like to read the letter that we've actually received, into the minutes, on behalf of the Daniel Boone Area School District, we would like to formally submit a request to host this year's PMEA, Pennsylvania Music Educators Association District 10 Orchestra Festival. The event is scheduled to run from Thursday, January 10th, through Saturday, January 12th, 2013. The necessary space and host requirements have been reviewed, and feel that this would be a great opportunity for our school and community. We look forward to starting the planning process for the students of PMEA District 10 this year, signed by Mr. McAdams, Mr. Henkel, myself, and hopefully, if you guys endorse it, we'll move on and, and begin to plan for that to be here in Daniel Boone.
Is the high school now open? I mean, we're not-
Yes, it's not, we've already cleared all the-
Okay, there's no other activities to be made?
Nope.
Okay. Do we need a full vote on that?
I don't know that you need a vote, I guess if you would endorse it, we'll get a signature, and we can move on with it.
Obviously, we have plenty of work.
There is, that's why they come, they look at all that, and, and they, they chose, again, they did do the elementary one, this auditorium was packed with people from all over the county, and I, I'm not sure what the, the region for PMEA is, I think it extends beyond the county line. Would you know that, Mr. Wolf? I don't, Mr. Henkel, would you happen to know, does that go beyond just the county?
Does District 10, but it does go beyond the county.
It does go beyond Berks County.
District 10, just to keep it safe, they're having a lot of difficultly deciding if a school to host it, we felt it would be a great priority for it, and you ask, and we ask, but, is it here?
I think it's a great idea, I mean, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do it.
So, we'll sign off on that, and we'll move forward with that. So that includes my report under the opening of schools.
Any board members have a problem?
Sure. Right.
Everybody's a figure. I have a problem.
And we also figured that Mr. Smith, that's Dr. Otto, is back.
Ready to go. Thank you very much, board members, appreciate that, and you certainly would be invited to that. I generally, at their concluding event on Saturday, offer some opening comments from the, on behalf of the, of the school district.
Great, thanks, good initiative on, on your part to, and Mr. McAdams' part to-
Yep, thank Mr. Henkel as well.
And Mr. Henkel, thank you for bringing this to the school district. Hopefully, we'll get it. Moving on, curriculum instruction, Mr. Sheehan?
Well, the meeting right now is scheduled for the fourth, the two of us may have a conflict at that date, so maybe moving into Wednesday, that, if there is not a meeting scheduled meeting, but I'll go back to the board by the voting meeting to ensure that.
Did you guys meet this month?
No, we did not. At the beginning, we wanted to get things rolling first, get the teachers, because unfortunately, unfortunately, they do attend it, and we may have a lot going on, so we want to get that going, and there's a number of things. We want to get a couple of chairs in, talk about how they're going to handle the diversity issue, and talk about some of our scores that came out of the, our expectations moving forward as a board, with some of the subjects that are lacking behind state national average.
Sounds good. Any questions for Mr. Sheehan?
No, we had nothing from the administration, other than that we're, we'll put some things on the agenda, as you discussed. I do want to mention that Mr. Miller and I are, are working with resurrecting the diversity committee. Mr. Miller, what date is that, this month? So the 27th, we'll be getting back together and moving forward with the initiatives for this year.
Now, is that going to be hosted by the individual we hired?
No, 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 we're on our own.
That's my fault, yeah.
We're, we're ready to, we're ready to walk. We're ready to go.
Any questions on the diversity committee by board members? Okay, great. Any other comments from board members? I've seen, any comments from the public on curriculum instruction issues? For that matter, diversity. Okay. Buildings and grounds?
Again, just a quiet month, very brief update. I've been in and out of Birdsboro a number of times since school started, and I know there's very many happy children and staff in that building now that it's, it's cool, even though it has started to cool down weather-wise. September and October can always warm up. There's really nothing, they're actually working very well, there was a little snafu, but just some minor adjustments needed. The system is going very well, with the new chillers that were installed this summer. It's actually been, it was a little too cold a couple of days, so they had to readjust it, but, in general, the chillers are, are working out very well, and the rest of the facilities across the district have been handled very well, so there's really not much to report this month. We are having, planning to have, Mr. Potts, a meeting on October 1st, and we will have some pretty full agenda for October 1st.
A lot of catching up, hopefully, Mr. Smith will be with us, hopefully, our prayers.
Yes, he's, things are taking a turn for the better right now in his situation.
Were there any unexpected costs, or things that came up during the, the install of the chillers, that we need to-
Not that I was made aware of, we can certainly double back on that at the facilities committee, but I haven't heard of anything negative, I mean, it was on time, as soon as they fired them up, they worked. I know Mr. Smith was very hands-on with it, spent a lot of time with Train, and, and got it up and running, so.
Actually, they completed that, I think, believe, two weeks earlier than projected.
Good.
Mr. Smith did stay on top of that.
Did Train take the old chillers?
Yeah, that was part of the-
I think that was part of the-
That was part of the bid?
The net, net for the price of-
We got a credit for the old chillers?
So they should wrap them, instead of us.
Right. Those are all the questions I have. Any board members have any other comments or questions on facilities? Okay, any questions or comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we can move on to the next subject here, finance.
We will have any course approvals for the voting meeting at this point, we don't have any to post. Item B is, information was provided to the board members, to all of you, for our participation in the settlement agreement, which, I'm not going to read verbatim what it says there, but just talk to the point. As a result of a class action suit that was brought by Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Attorney General, and 23 other states, our district is eligible to receive the amount, for those of you that don't happen to have an agenda in your hand, it's not a lengthy amount, or a hefty amount, but it still is to the good, $4,293.99 that we would be allowed to receive under, as part of the settlement. However, in order to, to do it, you actually have to have a formal board approval to accept it, and the reason for that is, is that you actually could go out on your own, but it would be litigation-wise, way beyond your expense, to even pursue this on your own. So being as part of the class action suit, is to our benefit to get this money. Brian Subers has reviewed the matter, and he would obviously be here before you'd vote for questions, if you should have any, on the 24th. But we have provided you with some attachments from the PA Attorney General's office, that provide further guidance on the issue. Some of it's frankly, a little bit more sophisticated than, than I quite even understand, but at the end of the day, there's about $4,300 that's going to come to us as part of this.
I was just kind of curious, did he or anyone in his office actually review the funding formula that they used, that they described in that?
That's a question I can follow up with him and ask him, I don't know if he shared that with you, Danielle?
I'm just reviewing his email. I don't think so.
I was just curious.
He hasn't specified.
Yeah, I was curious to see if, you know, if anyone on our end has reviewed the funding formula, to make sure that what we're getting is what we're supposed to be getting.
As far as what we're getting, that was the settlement that was decreed through this class action suit, again, we could go out on our own to try-
No, no, I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying that it's part of the decision, they provided a funding formula, as how each school got their allocation of money, and I was just wondering if somebody in Fox Rothschild's office-
I could follow up on that, sure.
-had actually worked it backwards.
That I don't know.
Take the fund, take how much money they're giving us, work it through the formula, and see what the variables are-
You mean if the math is correct.
Yeah, if the math is correct, and whether what we're getting is what we're entitled to get.
If you can note that in the minutes, we'll follow up with Mr. Subers and see if that occurs.
I don't know how complicated that is, or if it's going to take a lot of hours, or whatever the case may be, I'm just asking the question, so.
Yeah, we can follow up.
Okay.
That's it, under finance at this point.
Yeah, in terms of the-
Dr. Otto, you want to touch on the letter that we asked you to draft for the state bill and Senate bill?
Yeah, just as, and, I have been, interestingly enough, as I tried to find resolutions, they're just not out there, so if we're going to proceed to support, Mr. Sheehan, you can help me with the numbers, House Bill-
HB 1776.
76 and 1400. Mr. Subers actually sent me an email that said we might want to take a little bit more of a look at it, in terms of what we would actually be endorsing before we do that. He sent me, for better or worse, I mean, PSBA put out a white paper on it and cautioned against, while it may look good in some places, it may be detrimental in other places, so. I have a copy of that analysis, I'll be happy to send it to the board. At this point, we still have two weeks, if we still want to go ahead, and, because that was your direction to me.
And, and just so it's not a mystery, I've read the paper also, and it talks about the fact that sales tax and use tax taxes are, are not a sure thing, year in and year out, and they vary greatly, therefore, they're recommending that if they go that way, that a certain portion of the school district budget still be a property tax, to make up the gap. And then I've read the other end of the argument, and I'm assured if you want to go ahead and do that, what is the assurance that 100% of the money that comes from that sales tax, and 100% of the money that comes from the use tax, actually goes back to education? Because if everybody recalls, sales tax was initially enacted to take care of education, and as was gambling revenue, and as soon as they found out what the full money was, it all got put everywhere else. So, unless language is put into that bill-
My understanding is that language is in the bill to make sure that money that's raised is-
100% of that money has to go toward education.
That's correct.
And that any shortfall from the prior year need to be made up some way other than property tax, then PSBA is, is recommending that property tax still be a viable option for a shortfall. But I guess, you know, people that are dug in the numbers farther than we have, at the state level and local level, seem to claim that that sales tax is far, far above enough to take care of school taxes, and then still have a considerable amount of them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in support of it, I know the rest of the board voted in favor of it two weeks ago, and I wasn't here, but I, I fully support the initiative. So, whatever clarification you guys want to provide in the ensuing two weeks, that's great.
Absolutely.
Other states have done it, so, I shouldn't have to make that.
In terms of a finance committee meeting, I will be, I was hoping the other members of committee would be here, we'd, we'd set up a meeting, I will reach out to them, my apologies for not getting one in late August, I was on vacation, so, we will schedule it for the next, sometime in the next two weeks here.
As far as committee meetings, where we would be holding them?
We still have the Matthew Brook basement room, so until, there's, there was a thought that once this bridge project gets started, which I'm going to be talking about a little bit later, we may want to lose that cost and give that to them, then we'll just have to find spots around the district, we have plenty of space. So we'll just relocate somewhere, and just make sure the public's notified as to where we would be.
As, I think, you know, facilities, they rotate their meetings between buildings-
Correct.
Right now, I mean-
And it would be, well, obviously, if we get rid of, out of that lease, we'd be adding 20,000.
Actually, the library here is a good setting for committee meetings.
Well, then, that's fine, I just want to make sure that, that we start, that we have, I have a problem with giving it to the library.
Right.
And we're talking great, we're not using this way to move books, I suppose.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any, any other comments or questions by board members? Okay, seeing none, any comments or questions by members of the public on finance? Got two.
On that, except for my, my answer to you. For the fiscal year that we're currently in, 2012, 2013, you thought of the budget, after that, could you, the legislature, the different budgets, towards revenue for the district? Since that time, have you opened the budget, correct, or have you not?
I'm sorry, say that last part again, I couldn't hear the last part.
I believe since that time, you opened the budget, huh?
Yeah, we reopened the budget, that's correct.
And where did you open it on?
I believe $154,000 went into revenues from an accountability block grant, and subsequently on the expense side, it was spent out in, where was it, Danielle, in?
Emory, in, is it student?
Title one, the things, no, title ones tonight, I want to talk about that.
Like after school?
Just for professional development?
Development, professional development activities.
That was the largest single-ticket item that impacted our budget.
I think that question. The second question I have, is we're already a county, or a state representative, sort of, and he gave me the answer that I agree with, and he thought like the issue of the same question I asked him. For currently in the 2012, 2013 fiscal year, the prior fiscal year, 2011, 2012, and the governor of Florida gave his budget in the winter of the spring, 2011, and in that, in this budget proposal, the governor, the massive cuts for education to local school districts, Mr. Malone is claiming that the legislature put all those, those cuts from the governor back in, and you received that money, essential or not?
My recollection is, we received level funding from 1213 to 1112, so, and we actually got a little bit more, is that correct, from the state?
No, but I'm talking about 1112.
If you're talking about, if you're talking about 1011 versus 1112, I believe we went back to, I'd have to pull up, I'd have to pull up the budget.
The differential was-
Hold on. I probably have that.
Stimulus spending. The state gave us as much as they did previously, kind of state coffers, but the stimulus money that was used, Danielle, correct me on this one?
I have to go back to my-
There was stimulus money that, that the federal government gave us, so they gave us a bunch of money, which had a significant increase over the prior year, and then when they took it away the next year, they said, we gave it the same amount as previously, just the federal stimulus money wasn't there. And that was where our shortfall came. So, yeah, they funded us at a level, but it was without the stimulus money that we were not aware was there.
But?
Oh, yeah, so they, they-
Because the state, when you say stimulus money, that is from the federal government through the state government to come to you, correct?
That's correct.
That you did not get, that was not reinstated in the 1112 fiscal year.
That's, yeah, stimulus money was one, one-time shot.
So, I don't know if he's, he didn't mention stimulus later, but he did say, he did give you the explanation, you just-
But again, I believe we were not made aware as a board, or as a district, that part of that pool of money we got that year included a one-time stimulus bump.
Um, yeah, we were, my recollection was, we, we knew, and I'm trying to think of the number off the top of my head, wasn't it almost like a million dollars? $968,000 seems to stick in my head, which was part of the stimulus of that particular year, in addition to the seven or eight million, 7.8 million, or whatever that we get from the state. So, it was a shot in the arm for the school district, and allowed our budget to jump from one year to the next.
So, in fact, you may have gotten the same amount minus the stimulus money, so, if you would have added that comment to it, then that would be correct.
Close to it, yeah.
Okay.
Richard Martin, if you can give us a small draft, so, just a couple of comments about your resolution of Act 76, Senate Bill 1400. When I get off the meeting, I will send, if I afford the website for President Cox's Property Tax and Penitentiary Act, I will tell you everything that's in the bill. There are many special interests groups across the state, such as the State Department of Education, that do have objections to the bill, if you're looking at a strictly problem, there are a quick given, not going to be a property tax, I mean. I will say this, that the bill of this current magnitude does not provision there to maintain property taxes in case of the shortfall. As long as there's a property tax alive, it will go up. We want property taxes eliminated, school property taxes eliminated. So, right now, we are convinced, and I think the finance committee is finally convinced, that the bill does provide half the revenue upon the schools and the levels, and continue funding based on due evaluation, of course. But I'll send you the bill second thing I can do.
I believe it still uses the same funding formula that was developed with Act 1, so.
They're, they're using that, but eventually that has to change too, because that's more of a break. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, Laura, we have, get my permission on another career on behalf of the DTC, and we wanted to let the school board and the administrators, along with principals, know that we've been done over our budget for the upcoming year, and one of the things we found was we had some extra money left over from last year, and what we would like to do is for Dr. Otto, the sources of the principals, to go ahead and do some field trips for first through fifth grade, and we will be willing to fund up to $10,000 for transportation for the first through the fifth grades, so we can field trip this year, and because kindergarten situation being hectic, that is difficult to go anywhere, we will fund up to $2,000 for the preschools and that kindergarten, to bring some sort of procedure, you know, crackling field trip in, so that those kindergarten students can also participate in a field trip type experience.
That's great news, thank you so much.
Let me just say thank you.
Who should do the contact?
Just start with me tomorrow. I'm easy to find when there's an offer like that.
Any other public comment, under finance?
I want to follow that up.
Okay, thank you, guys.
That's amazing, thank you very much, I'm shocked.
Moving on to number nine, personnel. Under items A and B, as listed, nothing really to elaborate, under item C, again, not to have to go through all of these, but for everybody's benefit, all of these appointments under C are replacements, are new hires for currently existing positions.
Okay, under, so, so when you do not list a replacement in parentheses, which would be in the prior year exactly?
That is correct. Yes, just again, for the public's benefit, if there would be anything new, we would certainly list it as a new position, and talk about funding source, but these are all contractual issues and positions that are already in our budget, and accounted for contractually, but positions and job descriptions.
I'm sorry, again, Mr. Sheehan's question, so if they are on here with no replacements, they would have the same person last year, correct?
That is, that's what, that's why I took away from this statement, yes, so, so C to B would have been the same person that had that position last year, from what I'm hoping, I don't know that, um, I'm confused, right?
Um, I don't, I can check into that, I, that may not be the case, the reason-
Again, even though it's a shared position, if it's a different person, we'd like to kind of have an idea who had that position last year, and because it's a, it's-
Yeah, we can, we can find out who that's replacing.
Or is there going to be a new position?
I think that's a replacement, we'll have to find out who that was.
Because there's two of them, it's also a date.
Right.
I know that Connie Taylor's a lot of us in the line sense.
Right.
What was that? I'm sorry, what was that, I'm mistaken?
I said, uh-
He's two, two-
Two, uh, C to B and B. Say, that's a shared position, and so, the way it's written, we have to think that person had the position last year.
Okay.
If it doesn't, we like to name who had the position last year, but indicate it's a replacement and not a new position that was not there last year.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, that wasn't my question, I think.
But that was my point.
My, my question was, are we abiding by the teacher's contract?
How would we not be abiding by the teacher's contract?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that question.
Probably replacing.
So these people are no longer teachers?
Again, you don't need to be a teacher, you need, a non-teacher can have a, a-
Can you, okay.
Yeah.
That, that was my question.
The fund, the fee that that person gets charged-
Is contractual.
Is governed by the contract.
Okay, but, but-
So Connie Taylor, who is not a teacher anymore, because she's retired, can hold that position.
That's why I'm back to the original question.
But you can, you can hold that position, but she has to be charged with the contract service.
Okay, again, that's why I asked the question.
In fact, the reason I asked, is not to-
Well, you can't answer the first one, which you said it was the same as last year.
We'll check into those, if there's, there are names, we'll add them to the voting agenda. Three, our substitute staff, and four, our building volunteer- Three, our substitute staff, and four, our building volunteers, as we process them, uh, they come to you for approval.
And the volunteers follow through our.
They go through our Raptor system, Mrs. Barr and everybody in the office get rather busy at times with, with people coming in.
We're providing good names.
Yes. Okay, any other comments from board members? Any comment or questions from members of the public on that item? Okay, moving on to programs. Under item A, you have your monthly enrollment, and I do want to pause here just to give a little bit of an analysis. As you can see from the attachment that you provided, our official third day enrollment, which is what PDE asked us to, to collect, is down by 106 students, so that is beginning to have some impact. However, if you analyze that a little more closely, 80 of those students come from APC and AIC, so it's the Amity Elementary Campus, with the largest decrease in those two areas occurring in our kindergarten enrollment at APC, which is down 39 students from last year, um, probably no doubt impacted by the fact that we are into our second year of a half-day kindergarten. Because if you look at the other elementary kindergarten enrollments are actually fairly stable and up a little bit, with an increase of 17 at BEC and a slight decrease of six at MEC, so I'm at, I'm at a loss to explain why that is that way, but overall, it, it comes out to what I just shared with you.
Dr. O, in kindergarten, you can see they're down rate that you stayed, do you do any adjustment on staffing at that point?
At this point, no, we haven't.
I mean, we, we, I think, I mean, again, if we geared our staffing based upon X number of, and we're down that significantly, then, my thought, my question is.
It's a whole class.
It's a whole class.
Or, and a half.
Or half a class.
Or almost two.
It's a session.
Yeah. I'll have to check into that.
And I'm just asking a question for something else, guys.
No, I'll, I'll have an answer for you, um, as soon as I can go back and look at that.
Do we believe these students that are most likely enrolled like on academic conception or some other private kindergarten are to come back in the district in the first grade?
Some do, the, some don't, the numbers actually went down a little bit for that this year as well.
Yeah, I remember Mrs. Trainer, she would go out and contact some of these situations to find out whether the, I think, you know, how many kids are going to come back in the district, continue to do that?
Yes.
Mr. O, if I ask you, thank you, with the, with the DC, we're seeing the result of a lack of who owns the building, and, and we're at the bottom of that drop now, so less, we've not been turned around, and almost starting to build, you're not going to get a new, dumb family, you know.
With 43 students, a decrease in 43 students with the APC, what is the actual amount of income would that reflect that we did not receive?
Income for.
Because isn't each student like almost $10,000 a year or something, or more considered?
No, that reimbursement comes in, once you turn in your enrollment figures and you get reimbursement for that, so we didn't really technically lose anything, it, it just would be less than a prior year. It's not a loss per se, it's just money that you don't, you can't get reimbursed for somebody that's not in a chair, so it's not a loss per se, it's just the, the formula for.
What's a loss, a prior year loss is a prior year level.
Right, right.
So, you know, a prior year level, that's, that's $43,000, and it's a $10,000 student.
No, what you're, $10,000 is roughly what it costs to educate a student.
Right, but what do we get, what do we get?
I thought the funding formula was around $10,000, and it was costing us closer to 13 or something, like Daniel Boone.
But again, whatever it is, I mean, they're, they're, we budget a specific amount, and with the enrollment being down, you'd be short of that specific, whatever that, that amount.
Well, we ought to be taking a look at the classroom sizes and where these kids are and, or the, um, I didn't see it in there, but they didn't have the classroom breakdown?
No, they're not.
So, you didn't know, I mean, are these, now, teachers teaching classes of seven, or are they teaching classes of, you know, 21, you know, and if that's the case, can you lose, can you lose a session or two?
Well, with 106 overall.
You can't run that like 50, 300, or 200, or 100, you can't.
This is just a general enrollment report, the next report, we can probably do it at curriculum instruction as part of looking at the class sizes and how many students each teacher has and, and the staff coverage, that would be a good place for this, this is just the general across the entire district enrollment.
Right, do you think you can get us that report, because I remember last year, in prior years, we'd get a report actually broken down by class, so it would say special needs kids, you know, versus.
Right, we would always do that as part of the budget process, but we can actually bring that out.
With our monthly, with our monthly reports, we'd have a number of kids in each class, so there'd be like, I don't know, APC first grade, and it'd be like 19, and then it was like 21, 23, 27, 20, whatever it was, different sizes.
Yeah, that's, that's in the, this is, that's in the monthly enrollment, I'm using these figures from the third day enrollment.
Right.
We do that every month, so we'll have one next month.
Okay, well, look, we have that by the.
I can have it for you.
Can you take the third day enrollment and just crank those out and have it to us for the next meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
Just, I mean, just so you're aware, I mean, just because we're down 106 heads, we are going to lose that revenue, but at the same time, that doesn't equate to, and I, and I know we all know, but in the state, it doesn't equate to find that company, you know, unless.
You're talking about staffing?
Yeah, yeah. So, if you lose one kid, one grade, you can't, can't double the class up, so.
When I'm just looking at future budgets, how is that decrease going to affect our future budget and budget for the students?
What we'll do is when we go to calculate how many staff we need versus the projected number of students, and we do the division problem, it will probably reduce the number of staff that we need, if the projections hold up.
Okay, any other questions about the enrollment? Okay, you want to move on? Sure, items B and C are just, they will, those are trips, um, as you can see, from those two different groups, again, anytime there's an overnight trip, whether it's paid or not, uh, by the district, in this case, these aren't, uh, requires board approval, so those are, um, well in advance of the dates, but they need to get planning for those, so those are all, um, those are two items that will need board approval. And item D is, this is just the actual amount of the money for the information shared back in the spring with the Title I and Title II grants, um, actually, in this, um, and Mrs. Penza can help me with this after I introduce this, we received about $100,000 more than we were anticipating here, uh, for this grant, but this is all money that has to cover, um, federal programs and things that fall under Title I and Title II, and in essence, uh, general speaking, um, this grant covers parts of salaries for our reading specialists at MEC and BEC, staff development for teachers who work with Title I students, supplies that go toward Title I students, and professional development activities for students, again, that are covered by, this is really to help students that are struggling in different areas, and they're covered by Title I and Title II grants, so this is all pure federal money. Let me ask a question, is this, is this revenue neutral money, i.e., we get more, we have to spend more?
Correct, it all has to be expensed out, it's revenue in and, or revenue in and then expensed out. It has to cover things that are, it's pretty much similar to the ABG, but it's kind of the federal level, would that be correct?
That's fair.
But Mrs. Penza and I had a conversation about this today, and she said the business managers, I guess, across the county, kind of were a little bit shocked by the fact that it came in a little higher than usually the federal money, that doesn't happen.
No, it doesn't.
Can you do this one? Here.
I mean, just, that's, that's a true statement, there was emails that were sent around, and because of such the, the large swing, a lot of the business managers were entering that revenue into their budgets.
Yeah, let, let.
And with the revenue going in and the expense going in, it's really, it really doesn't have an impact, so if we didn't get the money, it wasn't going to harm us, if we do, then we can spend it.
Let's be real careful, because, because we call it correctly, wrong, wasn't there a time in the last couple of years when they gave us a number, and they came back correctly? Uh, we got a number, we got, this was probably prior year, intended to be suspended, but we got a number that Mr. Grujek reported, and they came back two or three weeks later and reported a different number because there was some type of mathematical error.
I do remember that.
And, so, yeah, so you remember, I mean, so I just, you know, you get the surprises like that, I tend to be a little concerned that, you know, it may not be correct, so, because that's spending.
Start spending it in January.
And that's what they told me to Dr. O and Mrs. Trainer when we were doing all this, you know, she said, until you get that official approved application.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
Correct. So, at this point, this is as, as official as we can represent, so, um, we're putting that on the agenda, you actually have to vote that.
Right, any other comments or questions from board members?
I have one more, I have a note here, Dr. O, at some time in the past, we had to talk about cyber schools, and had potentially starting to look at, we were going to think of an issue, to look at doing a cyber school ourselves, I know at least two students personally that have moved off just to get those cyber type of education process, have you ever given that any more thought?
Absolutely, um, Mr. Hawes, um, and I have met, uh, we had a meeting with representatives from Berks Online at the BC IU, um, are, we have a, I'll call it a mini team, for lack of a better, uh, term, that's actually taking a look at, um, trying to think out of the box of how we might entice some cyber students back to our, uh, our school, we're in the very beginning stages of that, you're certainly invited to the revenue enhancement committee meeting next week, because we're actually going to be talking about that, um, Mrs. Hamel has put that on her agenda, given us time, um, I will be out at district next week, but Mr. Hawes will be filling in for me next week at that meeting, um, so we do have some, some options, um, I'm cautiously optimistic at this point that we might be able to do something, um, the visionary side of me is looking out there to think that this is the way education is going, so we might as well get out in front of it as much as we can, um, many districts are already starting to foray into, um, cyber school options, so we don't want to be behind the curve on that.
Does Fleetwood have theirs on that money yet?
Well, Fleetwood, uh, I don't know a lot about their program, I just know they're, Mr. Hawes, you can correct me, I, I don't think they're using the IU, they're kind of going out on their own.
I think Fleetwood's sending with Brandywine, Brandywine's program, they're developing Fleetwood's piggyback on that.
So. Is that an option for us, I mean, instead of.
There, there are going to be many options, once we, uh, get through, taking a look at this.
I mean, that's a lot, we could go with Brandywine's piggyback and, and, well, that we could just get this in place for next year, and I believe Boyer County is set up.
Well, see, the, the one thing that you want to be careful of is, um, not creating a new expense, and we know with the approximately, using last year's numbers, there are about 80 students, predominantly at the middle school, high school level, who are accessing the cyber school option. We don't know whether they were, some of them may have been, I haven't analyzed the numbers closely enough, some of them may have been former homeschooled students, so we weren't getting reimbursement for them in the first place, some of them aren't, and each one of those students, it follows, uh, a sizable amount of our, uh, subsidy follows them out the door when they go off to cyber school. Uh, our feeling is, is that we have a pot of money to work with, and if we can reinvent ourselves within that pot of money and not incur a new expense, even if we come out as a wash, it will be another option for kids that we can do in-house, that I think will be a good thing in the long run for the school district and for the kids, so, um, that's all at the conceptual stage right now, but we're beginning to delve into it, and you'll hear more next week at the revenue enhancement committee meeting with, with where we are specifically, and, um, we're thinking about, uh, potentially piloting something with, uh, maybe all ed students at this point, so we've given it a lot of thought, we just want to be, tread very carefully that, because there is potential to create a new expense in this program, if a lot of people would decide that they actually would want to do this, so we have to be very careful that, uh, we, we find that balance, and, uh, we're prepared to do that.
I'm just thinking out loud here that, obviously, there's got to be some sort of benefit for piggybacking with another school district, they already have a program established, so, um, if your students were to go to there, there's got to be some sort of reimbursement from that school district for your students, there's got to be some sort of inter-district, uh, agreement that's established that allows, um, us in this particular case, or Fleetwood or whoever, to recoup some of those funds that Brandywine otherwise receives, otherwise, what would the incentive be to do it? Um, so, I'm, I'm just throwing that out there, as a way to get our toe in the water and establish something quickly, that may be an option to look at, um, for next year, however quickly that can be done, until we have our better understanding as to what it is we're doing, and then we can incorporate something in our own, I don't think anyone disagrees with the approach you guys are taking.
Right. No, your, your toe in the water analogy is very good, I saw a quote recently from Warren Buffett, don't test the river with both feet, so, we're trying to test the river with that toe in the water, and.
I mean, the concept with, I mean, I know all the students have been personally, and the concept is of being in webinars and, and video conference teaching and audio testing online, it's with.
At the end of the day, in, 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 in the way I see education going, it's, it's going to be very good for a certain segment of our students, and I, I think of this gifted students where you can't really supplement the way you would like, this opens up a whole new world to them, um, students who, um, might want certain electives with, who knows where our budget's going to go, but electives we might not be able to offer to everyone anymore, so that it might be a, a realm for that, there are, um, with space constraints, et cetera, et cetera, there are many, uh, positive aspects to it, it's, it's just, again, I'm, my major concern, and I hate to say it, because I always like to put program before money, but we need to watch the money on this one, so it doesn't become a cost that we can't bear first, so, uh, we want to make sure that the pot of money that we have can support what it is we want to do, and we're hopeful that, um, we can do that sooner than later, so we've, uh, Mr. Hawes has brought some good ideas with his experience at the IU, Mr. Hankel's been part of the conversation, Mrs. Torsh has been part of the conversation, so, uh, the IU has given us some food for thought, and, um, I think we're on the brink of, of getting something started, again, I just want to make sure that the, the program in this case, um, follows the money that we have to support it.
Any other questions from board members, comments?
Mr. Hawes, do you want to add anything to what we talked about, Mr. Hankel? I guess I overtalked it.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, anything else, uh, on here?
No, that wasn't on, actually, it was not on the agenda, but thank you, Mr. Shaheen, for bringing that up.
Policy? Um, second readings are all being reviewed by, um, Mr. Subers, I did want to point out, there was some question about item G, uh, again, we are working with, um, on a set of guidelines and practices, once it's implemented, that will make, there was a concern about this policy being user-friendly, um, already, uh, in anticipation of this, uh, Ms. Ms. Goss has indicated to me that coaches are already starting to implement parts of this policy, even though it has not been formally approved, and that they're starting to make use of Daniel Boone emailed to reach out to parents to start this process, it'll come with some fits and starts, but I'm confident that we'll get it to where it needs to be to protect the safety of our kids, which is my, my primary concern. Other than that, um, I do have an item for discussion, I would like to throw this out for some board discussion, let me introduce it. As you remember, last year, again, I, I need to talk money here, uh, but this is also a, a planning issue, um, I'd like to recommend that, um, we go ahead and develop a policy and a set of guidelines, not here tonight, obviously, but that help us manage how we address postseason competitions. Currently, we actually have no set policy and have not been following any set practice on this issue, as you saw, we frankly kind of scurried last year to make sure we found money for TSA, made sure we found money for Odyssey, and luckily, there was some money left over here and there to do that, I don't like to operate that way, so my main concern is with what happens with competitions, we don't seem to have too much trouble when they're local and at the state level, it's when they get beyond us, so as of right, beyond the state level, so as of right now, we really don't budget for them, and when we're confronted with a request, we really don't have a consistent response, so I'd like to bring this matter to the policy review committee, as I think we need some specific guidelines on how to handle the issue to avoid future problems, because I'm getting requests already for what might happen in the spring, and I don't, I don't want to go through that again, so I, I think we need to put some, uh, policies in place and guidelines, so if you have some thoughts on that, I can certainly take them back to the policy review committee and begin to work them into the policy that I think we need. I think a good way to start on that would be to go back, look backwards over the last five to 10. five to 10 years, and see how much, what events, maybe 10 years is too far, but maybe last five years, see what events kids have been participating in, both athletically and through the clubs or whatever, and determine what those costs are, and see if there's an average amount of money that we tend to be spending every year on these things, and maybe that becomes a line item in the budget. Or, if it varies, in one year there's none, and in other years there's a lot, maybe we just have a fund that's set aside as an escrow account, and we fund it, and that's the money that's available for those types of events, and, you know, you draw that down, and then maybe you don't draw it down for a year or two, or maybe you draw it down in, in six months, I don't know what it is.
And that's probably the way, if you look at Odyssey the Mind and just, oh, I've, we've been, like, children involved, and I can think of probably over the last, the state level isn't an issue as much as when they go to that, they go to the Worlds, or they go to Diamond Pass, the state level, the Worlds, two, two groups in 10 years made it that level, which is the Iowa level where they, they wanted help. So escrow fund, as you, as you stated, would not be hit all that hard.
Well, I'm just thinking of escrow fund, because you, you only have to fund it once, and then it's there, it's drawn down, and then when you get to a certain, I don't know, minimum threshold, it comes up on the board agenda as a, hey, do we, we put this in the, in the budget to fund it for next year to build it up? It's something that people, groups can donate to, to make sure there's, there's funds that balance is available.
And that's, that's the big ticket one, because when TSA goes to Seven Springs News for the, the state competition, it's, you know, it's a hotel, it's, it's a couple.
Yeah, whatever we do, I just want to make sure we have something that.
It's not, it's not, it's not as expensive as plane flights to Iowa.
It's more, it's more for the expectation of the kids that are involved, so that they know that, at the end of this, that, I hate to lead people on and then, oops, you know, you did so good, but now you, now you can't finish your mission. And I, I don't think that's a good thing to do. At the same time, I don't think we're in a financial position to pay 10 plane flights to Los Angeles, California, if something might happen to be in LA. So, that's, I want to try to find that balance there, and I, I mean, I thought we came up with a good plan last year, but the process side of me was not comfortable how that all unfurled, and I think we need to get a process in place and a system that at least lets everyone know what the expectation is, and when I'm not here and all of us around here aren't here anymore, we still have a process in place that will help future generations decide what it is they have to do, but, because I think we came up with a good plan last year, we just got lucky in some respects that there was some money there, and we were able to, you know, set, we would, you know, we had a reimbursement formula, and we kind of did it together, and everybody got reimbursed for everything, and everybody went away happy. But it's not written down anywhere, and that doesn't make me comfortable.
If anything, about the policy to state, you or somebody's got final approval, in other words, you can't be, they might be, an organization might be inviting someone, but they don't necessarily have to go.
Absolutely.
In other words, it's not open-ended that, oh, our season ended, but let's just continue for the sake of continuing. There has to be a reason or a mission or, you know, a goal to keep going, not just continue the season.
So, we're meeting in the Policy Committee in October, early October, we'll bring some ideas there and begin to formulate something and put it on paper.
And this would include all extracurricular activities? Sports, band, clubs?
Well, sports, you generally don't have an issue, because PIA stops at the state level, then you're done. So we're already covered there. My, the policy, I, I think we should address what happens at the state level, I don't think that's as much of an issue, but we really do, and even if we, it is, we could have conceivably, if you have a good group of students that are really, you know, knocking it out of the park with TSA, year in and year out, we could be dealing with this four, five, six, seven years in a row here.
Well, you're still sending, you're still sending 10, 15 kids every year.
Absolutely.
To the state level, to TSA. I mean, year in and year out, they're going, you're sending 10, 15, 20 kids.
I've already been approached, the, the, the talk, that's why I brought this forward, I thought, no, wait a minute, we're, we're going to get out in front of this this year, rather than behind it.
Odyssey the Mind's a different story, it's a different, completely different thing in two and 10 years, but TSA is every single year you're going to send, you know you're going to send a number of kids.
Have we also, just throwing it out there now, while we have more board members here than just sitting on the Policy Committee, are we going to discuss what types of things you're going to fund?
Absolutely.
So will you fund hotels, but not meals?
Right.
Fund this, but not that?
That's exactly what we did last year.
Bus tickets, but not plane tickets?
Right, that's what we did last year. We talked about stipends and capping it, number of days, days of competition versus days of travel. We can put all that in, that language, what I, what I call the micromanaging language, into the guidelines, but we just got to get a, I, I think where we need to get is, first, philosophically, do we want to support these kinds of things? And I think the answer to that is yes. We want to do it, though, if we have the resources to back it up, so that's the second philosophical piece. Then, once the philosophical piece is in place, we can put the, the procedures in place fairly easily. It's just that they're not written down anymore. To use Mr. Shaheen's, it's on the back of a napkin somewhere, and I don't think that's a good way to operate.
I think it's an excellent idea, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and I agree with you, you know, addressing it when the moment hits is the wrong way to do it, planning for it ahead of time is the right way to do it, and I think that's, that's an obligation we have to the kids of the school district. So, when they are performing, they know that there's, there's an opportunity to move on, and, and their season, quote unquote, isn't cut short, just because we didn't plan properly, so.
So we'll, I'll do some research around other districts, to be honest with you, I've already done a little screening of other school districts' policies on their websites, and I have found very little, so I have a feeling a lot of districts are kind of, you know, here and there, maybe their foundations are committing to these things, our foundation's not up and running yet, in the future, our foundation may be able to help contribute to things like this.
I'd recommend you, you check Seven Springs, because I know Odyssey, they tend to send a lot of people.
Okay.
And Warriortown from TSA, because they tend to rank it about first or second place almost every time they come to Odyssey, and they don't have a policy, maybe pick up the phone, call, shoot, pretend and ask how they handle that.
I just remember from my days back at Twin Valley, they used to have a very strong, I think it was actually, it was their technology student team, and as principal, I went through the same thing, they'd come to me, can I have this? I'd go, well, I don't have the money. You know, and then I'd have to go to the board, and the board would go, well, why didn't you budget? Well, we didn't, you know, so we got to get past all that, and make sure we're, we're having a, a plan, rather than a reaction.
Okay. Any other board members' comments or questions in this section? Okay, seeing none, any comments from the public on this? Policy?
I'm Shad, Seven Springs, Seven Springs. Does the board have a policy on any of your buildings, or portions of the buildings?
Yep. Yes, we do.
How long has this been here, a employee?
I believe 34 or 37 years we've spent here with Daniel Boone.
34, 36?
I'd have to get the exact, she left for a number of years to go to Kutztown, I don't know exactly how many years that was.
Prior to Central Elementary Station, was she a principal?
She was a mystery teacher here, a building principal, and then she had functioned in various assistant to the superintendent kind of positions the rest of her time here.
You know, that's 16 years in the district, she's always been here. She's been at bridge from one administrator to another administrator, one superintendent, one other assistant, and she's built up a remarkable institution. I would like to go to consider that she's appeared in a few requests that, according to a building, library, or many of the songs, you consider that.
We'll take that under consideration. Thanks, Mr. Shad, that was a lovely suggestion.
Shane, I would be very, very, I would like to see the scores going to the weather policy, because it's, it's very expensive, football goes on to, their season ends, but they have two, three playoff games. You have, there's traveling, there's D's for games, there's, you know, we, we could use a budget $10,000 for playoff launches, I know that's not, but that money is pulled out of budget and set aside for each sport, and if they don't go on the playoffs, then that money goes to the back end, or it is any money from other activities that would be able to use it. So if, if every season pans, and that budget is that budget, I think, you know, I think there will be more money in the pool for other educational activities to, to use. But until, you know, we were funding the, the baseball team to see what place they, they couldn't win the first place, they were playing games to see where they placed, and I think, you know, I think sports should actually be part of that issue also, than just your educational programs.
No, I think we, this is all extracurricular activities, so that would include athletics, music, clubs, everything.
Rather than, I would say, you know, sports isn't really an issue, because it's already in the budget, in case it.
Actually, I don't think it really is in the budget, we have a budget, and my recollection was, we did an analysis, I'll say it wasn't this past year, but the year before, where the, I believe Mr. Shad asked the question, which was, how much money do we actually spend on postseason play in all sports? And I think the number was just around $20,000. I have it written down somewhere, I didn't bring that particular folder with me, but, and that extra money just came out of the, the general fund balance, so we weren't budgeting for that, because one year and the next, you didn't know who was going and who wasn't going to postseason play.
But it didn't change money.
Right, overall, and that, that was the number we were given. So, I think what Dr. Otto's suggesting here is, you know, extracurricular postseason funding policy, period. That, that includes athletics, and that's why I was suggesting, hey, look, let's take a look over the last five years, what teams are going, what's it costing us to send these kids to these things, and we can do an analysis on an annual basis, how, how much money are we spending, and how much money do we need to set aside and put it in, in an escrow account? So as you suggest, if football doesn't go to postseason play, well, then they're not dipping into the escrow account, volleyball might be, right? Or TSA, or Odyssey the Mind, or whoever it is that goes on to the next level, or whatever there's, it is they're doing. It doesn't stay in some cloistered part of the budget for a specific sport, we just don't budget our sports that way.
Okay, I thought, when I, when I pulled their sports budget, that they were money set aside for, they each played football, or they had, you know, $80,000, and they go to playoff games, and then the Los Angeles School District set up $2,000, and then there was $8,000 left, or $10,000 left, or $15,000.
I think when she puts her budget together, they put a budget together like that, but it isn't that that money was dedicated for football, it's the sports budget.
Right, they, they, they're using individual, oh, sorry, go ahead, finish.
They're ball parking what they think their expense is, so they're maybe over on one, they may be down around another, but net-net, you know, it's, it's where they think they need to be total budget-wise. I understand your concern, and Dr. Otto's going to handle that, saying, okay, all sports, all activities, TSA, Marching Band, whatever, competitions, above beyond a normal season, is going to have policies out there.
The one thing that I would just add to the conversation that's unique about sports is, unlike the activities that we're at least talking about, TSA and Odyssey the Mind, they're not revenue generators. Football, five home football games every year generates quite a bit of revenue for the school district. Eight to 10 or 12 home basketball games generates considerable revenue, because people don't get into those for free. So all of that money gets thrown into the mix of what we're talking about, as well as what we budget. Beyond that, I don't, Mrs. Pennington, maybe you can elaborate on how you budget the revenues. I guess we take the previous season's gate and, and kind of use a prediction model and, and figure out what we would have, but when we have a big crowd come here from Pottsville, or like the Springford game last year, there's quite a bit of money coming into the school district, at each one of those home football games. They, they probably generate more revenue than any other sport, frankly. So that's helped, that helps offset those costs as well. It's the same model that we have for our plays, when we sell out three straight nights, and we use that money to help defray the costs for that. So what's a little bit different, and I will factor it in as we talk about this policy, certain activities generate revenue, and others are generu, gener, revenue neutral, they don't generate anything. They're, they're a flat cost, they're a sunk cost, period. It's not the case with all of our sports programs, especially the ones that generate a significant amount of crowd.
But please, Dr. Otto, I don't understand, but the football, the skating, the basketball generation, ticket sales.
Shane, I'm not going to debate that with you, we generate revenue from those sports, Shane, we don't generate revenue from other things.
Sure. I mean, you know, uh, I'm.
Shane.
Well, sadly, we're not.
But look, the way, the, the way that, I mean, we're not going to get in an argument about this tonight. No, no, I, I just want you to understand, the way we, football doesn't have a budget, per se, and then they're not being held to adhere to a specific budget. Neither does volleyball or any of these places. Our budget is sort of built up as to what are the costs of the different programs that we offer, and a lot of those are in, some of them are in equipment, some of them are in salaries and stipends to the coaching staff, and I mean, that's the bulk of it, to be quite honest with you. And at the end of the day, we assemble all those costs, and we come up with an overall budget for athletics, right? Now, you could break it down, buy sport or buy, uh, s, um, school, middle school, high school, but at the end, that's not how we've treated it. We've treated it as one athletic budget of $647,000, whatever the number is, and we take a look at that budget, and we take a look at, what are the game receipts? And all the game receipts go to support all the sports, and what are the activity fees? And all the activity fees go to subsidize all the sports, and I think we came up with like 300 and some odd thousand total revenues between athletic fees and game receipts. Somewhere, I thought it was just shy of 300, that go towards the 647,000 overall budget. So, the, the sports themselves, and the students who, and families who participate in them, are paying for almost, a little less than half, or, you know, 35, 40% of the overall cost of the program, and the district, and the taxpayers are subsidizing the rest. I think what Dr. Otto's proposing is, look, let's address this issue of postseason play, which typically just came out of fund balance as an extra cost, now we're going to figure out some way to budget for that going forward. And whether it's an escrow fund, or it's a line item budget every year, that way, the money's available for all the teams to go to postseason play, and if they don't, the money's available for a different team to do that, which is exactly what you're asking us to do. So we're on the same page.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's only fair we let Dr. Otto go back, I mean, this is preliminary at this point, so, I mean, we could sit here all night and discuss.
No, I think with the issue, we're just sort of clarifying it.
Well, we clarified this now for three years.
Well, let me just add one more clarification, one of the, from a philosophical standpoint, every one of these activities is now being subsidized in part by the family. I think we owe it to them, to let them know at the end of the year, if their kids have done so well, how we're going to help them. That's all I'm trying to say.
You're exactly right.
Okay. And look, it's okay to get some pushback every now and then.
I don't mind pushback at all.
It allows us to.
It's like the treatment guy.
Okay, so, moving on, any other comments from members of the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to transportation.
Actually, I do have a report this month, usually we don't have much to say, but board members, with the start of the new year, and I'm going to give Mrs. Torsche some credit as well, putting her stamp on the district early here, we have developed a primary student drop-off letter that we asked all parents to sign off on, again, just really for safety, again, the more I'm finding out is, the more you have to enforce safety, the more it sometimes becomes inconvenient, but that's the way it has to be. But the letter that we provided you was one that was sent home to all parents of K-2 students, to make them aware that if there is not a responsible person at the bus drop-off, well, sometimes the bus drivers, frankly, they'll go around the block, they'll try to help and, and see what they can, but we are not going to drop off a child with no responsible adult there. And if that happens more than once or twice, we are going to start calling the local authorities, because that's something, that's a parental responsibility. We, we cannot continue to hold children for hours on end at the end of the day. It's very minimal that it actually happens, if, if at all, I don't, I think it's, may have happened once or twice so far this year, but the reason that we put it in a, a letter form is that no one can say they weren't informed. So this is a, a bit of informed consent, to say that they've signed off on this, they understand what they're going to do, and we are going to do everything that we can to ensure the safety of their children.
Do you have a copy of that letter right here?
It's in your.
I know, I know it was in the.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I didn't bring it.
So I just wanted, for the benefit of the public and the press, there's a couple of points on here that maybe we just talk about, it just says, "In efforts to work with our transportation providers and to keep our children safe, the following procedures will be put into place when a K-1, K-1 and 2 grade level child is not met at the bus stop by a parent, designated adult, sibling, or accompanied by an older peer on the same bus. Children grades K through 2 will be returned to the school building in which they attend, parents will be required to pick up their child up at the school by 4." Parents will be required to pick up their child up at the school by 4. If the child is brought back to school repeatedly due to no one being at the bus stop, the district will have no other alternative other than to contact the local authorities." So that's the guideline.
I have a question. Who's going to be there till 4 o'clock?
Well, that was my next question.
Because this thing just came up years ago. See, now I'm getting old again. This came up years ago that one is who's going to...
Well, the principals are generally there until 4.
And what if they're not?
Well, we'll have to work with that contingency.
And what if the parent's still not there till 5? They work till 5.
Again, I'm not disagreeing with this letter, but Mr. Basil, I think you were going to comment the same thing I did. This just came up several years ago.
Came up like three years.
Mrs. Torshis, do you want to, as an elementary principal, come on up here and help me with this?
Say the person's there till...
I'm going to tap her experience as a former elementary principal to help me with this.
Maybe again, because 4 o'clock's a great deadline, but...
But if they don't come, what happens? Yeah, what are you going to do?
Well, 4 o'clock is not in our secretary's hour. We need to be in the building and stuff. And for the most part, as a principal, we are there until after 4 o'clock. We have to see for everybody, and I know there's different occasions where we might not leave at 4. But more importantly is, is that we wouldn't, we wouldn't obviously leave that child being there, but who is there for that child to begin with if they can get there till 5 o'clock? That would be my, my priority concern. As to where this child will be for the next two and a half hours and how to...
No, my concern is, and this is what was four years ago, is you're out of the district for whatever reason, you're vacation, whatever, I don't care what you're out of the district for. Secretary is only, we only obligated, say till 4. If they're the only ones left, what do we do with that student? That's my concern.
I know that...
Even if you're still there, what if the parent says, well, I'm already late, I might as well finish my work day, say till 5:30.
Actually, I believe in my four years here, there has been one instance where that happened, and they actually went back to the bus garage. That's not the environment.
I agree with that.
No offense to the bus garage, but we'd rather have them in a school than the bus garage.
I also have a, another concern, and again, it's not pointing fingers at anything, but I also don't want a student left in a building with a single individual either. I mean, there's one over one.
That's true.
From that standpoint too, for, so that, if you understand what I'm thinking, okay? From your safety standpoint, liability, that's what I said. So if the student can't get picked up at the bus and we bring him back to the building and the secretary's going home, the other one in that building is a principal, I got more concerned that you've got a child alone in a building with somebody who's not their guardian.
Correct.
Even if you make it 4 o'clock, obviously the parent can't make it up to work.
Right.
They're going to scramble and call cousin or aunt.
Well, let me put it this way, I don't want to create, this is probably a one or two or three time occurrence in a school year. I think what we're really doing, it's a covering ourselves issue to make sure that people have been duly informed of, at least we have, again, it's written down somewhere. This is what we're going to do. There are always contingencies and always things that you can't predict for, and I trust the adults that I work with that they're going to take care of the welfare of the child. We are not going to put a kid out on the street.
That's not a question.
I think the issue is more one of, what do we do with the child after 4 o'clock?
Correct.
And how do you handle that until whatever time whoever picks him up?
Got it.
And whoever's picking him up, are they on a list? Is it just some random person? Maybe the best thing would be to take him to one location and all kids come back to that one location. Maybe it's the high school, maybe there's more activity going on in a given day, I don't know, or it's the middle school.
We discussed that before, but then we have a transportation issue. But we've discussed that before where they go back to, say, the high school auditorium and we actually have to...
Babysit.
People to stay.
Yeah, you got to babysit.
Each time that a child will be returned after school, we would be in contact with the parents and we would make those arrangements with them.
Yeah.
This would be an emergency situation if we say, well, the child is with us. Most times it's work that a parent was where they need to be and they do come back to pick up the child. I would think if we would have a situation where there would be a child alone or than 4 o'clock, and we are always on the field to make sure that we contact either myself or the principal, we should contact them. Dr. Otto, you can support that to make sure that it's not just one of them.
I also just want to, on a side comment here, I'm not trying to cast aspersions at our parents and community. 99.9% of the time, this is not an issue. But we need to be prepared for the contingency when that happens.
And this is more in support of our strike and the...
Sure.
Oh, yeah, we agree with you.
They needed one of the sponsors on the phone with the bus drivers because they felt they were leaving that child there, you know, that that was now being called in. So we both, we both agreed that, you know, we decided to be supportive of one another and to, you know, have...
I know that the transportation companies were very concerned.
Of course, yeah.
And obviously, all you need is one time beginning of the year, and we have a lot of training bus drivers.
Well, look, I think we support the idea. I think the question is to the degree you guys can write some sort of policy as how you're going to handle things from 4 o'clock on so that other principals or administrators or whoever understand what their responsibilities are when a child's brought back to the school, then...
And they are, they said the building sent out their own letters to the parents. It's more of supporting the bus company and, you know, that it's not just from our, our other levels that it is a lot, you know, supporting that it wasn't just, you know, our, our...
I mean, we have no way here before a lot of principals would put a child in the car and take it to the building.
No, we won't.
No, I was just saying maybe the bus company takes some too...
That opens up all issues with liability.
And again, I know this is, these are the far exceptions to the rule. But, you know, to make sure there's a policy in the district that is the same for our children and that that policy is adhered to, whether it's to deep supervision or, you know, where that child's going to go. If we don't have the policy, then we should also defer that to the policy to maybe put one in place on, so that it's, that it's followable.
And again, I...
I've had the element, has it happened at all this year yet?
Yes.
How many times? Once so far?
Twice.
Twice.
See, that's fine. I mean, once in a while, it does happen. If it's a continue with the same group of family members, then I got a concern. Because then you become babysitters.
Yeah, I remember, that was the issue.
Then you become babysitters, and that's not fair to you, and it's also not fair to the district.
The other reason for the letter from the bus drivers is pointing you that many years aren't coming out of their homes. And they have a school kindergarten, that they're dropping off at a selected spot, and they don't see anyone there, and they're not coming out. And that would give a lot of future concern, especially where there's not enough children coming off of us. That, that was, you know, really more to support.
Especially if you need dogs.
Correct, that does make sense, true.
No, look, I totally remember we discussed this at length two years ago, or whatever it was, three years ago, and I think we had the same questions then, which was, well, what happens when they get back to us?
Yeah, I think we're going to stay back to the same conclusion that we had the building principal, you know, say, in the building, if there was a student that was brought back and it's all responsible, we can't contact those parents or the child.
Okay.
And most of our buildings are all alone, at least at the elementary level, that you always have an ABC program, which is where we lead to move to a spot where there's other adults and children, which you have, you should now...
Well, I guess that's where I was going, whether there was one particular building that worked best for dropping a kid off, where there's more activity, there's more people there for a longer period of time.
But then we had transportation to go back over. Say we designate high school and they were, you know, they're dropped over here, transportation had to drop them over there. Plus, I guess...
Yeah, but why would the bus come back here when the bus just goes straight to the high school?
Yeah, but what happens if the bus is handling the elementary runout near...
If they're in on APC, they're going to go right here.
...in the building that we've been zoning and something up on 560.
I guess my only thing would be, there's enough principals close by that if you're not in the building, or if the AIC principals are here, the APC could cover them, rather than, you know, at least a principal should cover. Middle school principal, we didn't even go over to APC. You know, Birdsboro, Monocacy could somewhat do it too. That would be my only concern is that principals should stay there, not necessarily past 4 o'clock, I'm sorry. You know, up until 4 o'clock, I think that's fine, but I think the principal should probably do that.
Let's let the ministries get back and follow.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
I was very careful in my particular policy when I made it stand out as a national procedure to that it comes and you have to go to the house.
Yeah, I think whatever the guideline is that you guys are establishing for yourself in-house and what you're following, I mean, that addresses those concerns. Yeah.
Okay, moving on, under bridge closings, you that have gone through downtown Birdsboro midday anymore, it's becoming like what I used to face when I traveled over to Lansdale and toward the Philadelphia area. So with that intro, we were informed this morning. Well, first, let me go first with the bridge over Hay Creek. That closes tomorrow. So the bus companies are aware of that, and we have our contingencies in place. But the double dose is that we also received notification from PennDOT that the Route 345 bridge heading out of Birdsboro and that Exeter is going to be reduced to one lane as of Monday, September 24th. And that's going to last for three years until that project is done. So given that we just found that out today, we're going to be reaching out to our transportation contractors to just kind of communicate it outside of this meeting to the rest of the community that bus rides may be affected. I already called Mr. Henkel today to let him begin announcements to the students that want to go over to Amity, you might want to head down to Monocacy and cut over Old Airport Road rather than going up 345. It's going to be a little bit of a nightmare in old, little old Birdsboro for a couple of years with traffic.
Those who want to have the one-way traffic into Birdsboro, not Birdsboro, these...
I thought they were putting a temporary bridge.
No, it's, it's kind of, we knew this was coming. I just, Mrs. Bukowski in my office today walked in, Danielle and I were having a conversation. She says, oh, by the way, I just got the call.
Is it 24 hours a day?
Well, once they start working on that bridge, it's going down, they'll go one lane and work on it, just like they did. I remember when they did the viaduct in Reading over the head, it was one lane for years, and then they'll close that down and they'll go over to the other side, generally the way they work on bridges.
But so where would the traffic go, in or out?
No, I think what they'll do is they'll have a stoplight, and at both ends, they'll have to install a temporary stoplight.
Yes, yes, there's supposed to be a temporary bridge next to it, and then a new one where the old one...
I honestly don't have the details of that plan. I do know that we went to a meeting last year, was it, or a year and a half ago, maybe, where they're getting ready to close the bridge down in Douglasville too, because that bridge is in terrible shape. So we're looking at the potential of creating kind of an island community here with traffic. So that's beyond school, but we have to interface with the, PennDOT doesn't really pay...
They thought they wanted to eminently domain with the NAPA.
They did, with the bridge in-house on the other side. They tore it down.
And they closed down the old one, the normal one.
So that's what I think.
All I know is that Monday, 4/24th, that bridge is going down to one lane. So stay tuned, we'll put some advertisements on the website, probably wind up making some kind of connect ed call to those that might be affected by it.
Whoever's going to be affected by it, we should delay school. You can't get kids up.
We're hoping that that won't happen, so we'll work on a plan.
Your pickup times will change, start picking kids up earlier.
I don't know what the transportation routes are going over that bridge, but I don't think we run too many buses over that bridge. So that's it for transportation. That's a lot to contemplate.
Okay, old business?
I actually have two items. They're not on the agenda for the benefit of the public. The board has asked us, board members, you have at your, at your places, some extra handouts that I brought regarding heat guidelines. The heat guidelines were our national standards that our trainers using, that we've already started to implement. They're not in a formalized board policy, but how to handle extreme situations of heat on our field, so all the coaches have been made aware of that. The second thing is...
They're expected to go at 90 degrees air temperature and 40% relative humidity, which will level me in the summertime at 90%. Every 15 minutes, there's a mandatory break for water. 90 degree air temperature, 40% relative humidity, which we don't get. So that, that is, when it's 90 degrees out, they should be having a water break every 15 minutes for guaranteed 40% humidity.
Well, that's...
And again, we need to make sure that's happening because I hear it is probably not at this point, but moving forward next year, football, Marching Band, baseball for spring.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll take a look at it, but that's what we have right now and...
The only reason I brought that up is, you know, you were down to 86 degrees and 60% relative humidity, which is probably a realistic summer day, except for 15 minutes. So can you follow this guideline?
Well, it's a guideline right now. We can take it and tweak it and work with it.
So again, I mean, it's what needs to be done.
Who issued this guideline? It doesn't say on here.
That was researched by...
I pulled this off, I also saw this exact chart online, University of Tennessee, I think this is their...
By Mr. Hartzell, our athletic trainer.
Yeah, no, I was wondering, obviously he didn't create this himself, so who, I was wondering what medical association or something came up with this?
I'd have to check into that.
I saw this chart on the University of Tennessee.
You would think, I mean, if it's Tennessee's temperatures and humidity levels are going to be a lot different than Pennsylvania, so...
Well, they're doing what they're saying, and they're...
I think they're giving you some guidelines there.
And what the temperature feels like. So it's a generic chart, it's upstate New York, or it could be the desert of California, that if it's 90 degrees and it's 40% humidity, it's going to feel like 91 degrees. And that's, that's the heat index. So the heat index, the heat index, it does not matter where you're on, it's like wind chill. It's going to be, that's what it is. So whether it's Tennessee, Florida, upstate New York, Maine, it's the same.
No, that should take into account all climates.
Yeah. Because it takes humidity, if it's temperature is one thing, but it takes humidity into that...
I think it's a good start.
Yeah. How are they measuring relative humidity on the field? They got a barometer down there?
He has, he has some kind of device that he uses and actually points it at the field and it gives you all that data on the playing surface.
Tells you the temperature and the relative humidity?
I believe. I'd have to get further background on that, but they've become, based on our feedback to them, to really take a look at that and check that.
How often is that thing calibrated?
That I don't know. I'd have to give that answer for you.
Like any device, you don't want it, you know, it's got an error rate of 15% and...
Right.
Your guidelines here are pretty darn narrow, so... Okay, what was the other one here? You have a concussion policy?
On the concussion policy, again, while we didn't have time to put it into a formalized written policy, we have implemented the practice that you see there, that directs coaches on what to do if there is a suspected concussion. This is one that I would like to put down in a formal board policy and bring back to the PRC in October, when we have our meeting.
One of the things that we don't have is what we, the number of concussions you will allow before we would have to not allow that captain to participate in the room.
We would probably want to get some medical advice written in the policy.
I think we should, I think we should because there are people that are very susceptible to concussions.
Absolutely, and as we write on today, and play again next week, you get wrong again, now you've got two very serious issues.
Well, I think it goes hand in hand as far as what you're allowed to come back.
Well, again, we can also write into our policy.
It makes you come back and get wrong again, and you're not, two situations, even though though you're asymptomatic and running forward. The NFL is looking at that now, where they're finding that those that get the most likely individuals, the, the amount of damage that can be done, even from concussion, two-year period of time, it is phenomenal. So, you know, the...
But we'll, we'll research it.
The investors of the athletes, what we need to look at, that's right, students. It may be, it may be extremely disturbing to them, but they may not understand, the parent may not understand, but it's, it's what we need to do, then get a look at that. Maybe give medical advice, maybe find out, maybe do concussions, maybe extreme, maybe we don't, maybe we have.
Right. So, we'll be moving forward with that. I just didn't want to wait, we had a policy in place to deal with the issue. That's all I have.
Any other questions or comments on these items? Old business? Any board member have any additional old business that we need to bring up? Okay, new business?
I have none.
Any new business? Okay. Public presentation on any item?
Shane, 4:30, I have a, with the transportation, I understand the, the concern for children getting safety to their home. What about the walking since the kindergarteners or the birds and saturated that are walking, you know, up to two miles to Bird's Row to get home? What happens? Okay, they have walking money, they separate, and then they go home, and there's no problem with the school districts standing on that. If you're getting dropped off at a school, you know, and you have a driving link to the house, you know, I think that's a little safer than walking, you know, five-year-old to Bird's Row, up, up two miles.
Bird, five-year-olds do not walk two miles, one mile minimum.
One mile, you're seeing one mile maximum.
Right, but we don't have a kindergarten or a first grader walking two miles across the house.
Okay, beside the semantics of how far they're walking, I think the issue is one of the school district is no longer providing transportation to and from the school in Birdsborough, for example, anyone within a one-mile radius. So, at the end of the day, our responsibility isn't, we don't have a responsibility to deliver that child into the hands of their parents if they're walking home, whereas if we have a bus company, they do have a responsibility, there's a liability issue there, and because we're delivering the transport, we're providing the transportation, we're providing those services to make sure that child gets from the school door to the home door safely. And I think that's the liability exposure that's there for both the busing companies and the school district, so that's what we're trying to address.
So, the, the school district is worried about your liability and safety of the children.
I mean, don't parse my words like that, Shane. At, at the end of the day, we can't offer personal escorts for kids that are walking to school. I mean, I mean, what you're asking is, is an impossible task for us. So, you know, at the end of the day, we, we have to deal within the constraints that we deal in and, and control the things that we can control. We can control when a kid gets dropped off by a bus at the house and a parent isn't there and the kid is between, you know, kindergarten, first or second grade. We can control what happens in that circumstance, and therefore, we can do something about it. We can't control what happens when a kid walks from, you know, the high school or the elementary school to their house. I mean, there's, there's no way for us to control that.
Okay.
Okay.
Contact 729 second. Is there a way of, of in the next couple of days, giving the credit to the proper people for the dissemination of field checks, get out of your isolation as possible, so the work is...
I think that's an excellent idea.
It's an excellent idea. We will, Mr. Matt, tomorrow morning, we need to talk.
Mr. Beasley.
Mr. McCollum, after I talk to these ladies, then we'll talk.
Yeah, you got to talk to the people, Joe.
Mr. Beasley, 9:30. For how long are we waiting on that? Prior to our year, so, you had a long, long time here.
We've had that on for a while, but that's, that's a group effort, so...
And the other thing that I see do, I don't remember being all before, which is nice, on the first page, we were discussing when the next meeting itself, how we can, I think that starts, we need to do that for this.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, we appreciate them, especially positive feedback.
Laurel Green, 367, in regards to the concussion policy, I just want to say, we have this,